Okay, good evening. I'm going to open tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting on February 23rd, and we're going to start out with a presentation. I would like to note that we do have Mike McManus and his wife Janet, who are from the Board of Selectmen in Sutton, for this presentation. So, welcome, Mike, Janet. Emily?
Thank you. And for those in the audience who might not know, my name is Emily Cobb. I'm the police chief here in New London. We have members of family today that are family members of those receiving the awards tonight. So, thank you all for being here. Members of the New London Police Department, New London Fire Department, so thank you all, and Sutton Police Department as well. So, on November 16, 2022, a motor vehicle complaint came into the New London Communication Center for a vehicle that was speeding in excess of 100 miles per hour, heading northbound on Interstate 89, and it was last seen in Hopkinton. Sutton Police Chief Jonathan Corbett was on duty and responded to the area. Chief Corbett saw a vehicle go by him at an excessive speed, which he believed was the same vehicle, called into dispatch. Chief Corbett attempted to stop the vehicle, but due to icy and dangerous road conditions, he quickly backed off and lost sight of the vehicle. As Chief Corbett was getting off Exit 11 to get off the interstate, he saw that the vehicle had crashed on Interstate 89 at the off-ramp at Exit 11, and the vehicle was also on fire. New London Officer Stephanie Welch was in the immediate vicinity, as she had already been responding to the interstate, to try and intercept the speeding vehicle. Both Chief Corbett and Officer Welch ran up to the vehicle, which was quickly engulfed in flames, and physically pulled the two occupants of the vehicle to safety. Both occupants had sustained severe injuries in the crash, and Chief Corbett and Officer Welch provided aid to the occupants until the ambulance and fire department arrived. Chief Corbett and Officer Welch took significant steps to mitigate a life-threatening event for those two people, and are therefore recognized this evening with a life-saving award from the New London Police Department. Thank you, Chief Corbett and Officer Welch, for your prompt, professional response, in saving two lives under extraordinary circumstances. And I'd like to welcome them up here now.[143.76][143.76][applause] We have life-saving certificates here, one for Chief Corbett, along with a medal, which is customary for folks to put on their uniforms to signify that they've received this award. They both read the same thing, "Presented to Officer Stephanie Welch and Chief Jonathan Corbett for actions on November 16, 2022, when you came upon a fiery motor vehicle crash. As a result of your swift and heroic actions removing injured occupants, you saved two lives." Congratulations.
Did we get sufficient photos?
I hope so.
Would it be difficult to get one with the selectmen from New London and Sutton while we're all right here?
Sure. on to the rest of our meeting. That's it. Thank you for coming. Drive safely.[291.22][291.22][laughter] Doesn't appear to be any rush to move on to the bond hearing. Welcome. Okay, so, moving on to the bond hearing. The first bond for discussion is $275,000 for the purpose of repairs and renovations to Whipple Town Hall and the Bukeur Building. So, I'll open that up, if anyone would like to make any comments or... Okay, five-second rule. Moving right along to the next one. $300,000 for the purpose of performing pump station standby generator upgrades. This will qualify the town for federal and state funds, and additionally will authorize the town to apply for and accept grants or other funds that may reduce the amount to be repaid and participate in the state revolving fund. RSA 46, semicolon, 14 established for this purpose, and to allow the town to expend such monies as become available from the federal and state government and pass any vote relating thereto. It is anticipated that the town will receive up to $75,000 in principal forgiveness from the state revolving fund loan program. Any comments? Okay. Moving on. $375,000 for the purpose of purchasing land on Newport Road, MAP 59, Lot 10, for the site of a future municipal building, with the intent of housing the New London Police Department and/or other municipal needs. Discussion. Yes. If you come up and identify yourself, you have to push the button so the light turns green. It's because we're recording this, so, thank you.
The light, the light is green.
Yes.
My name is Jack Sheehan, from New London. I just like to question. About two weeks ago, there was going to be a public hearing about purchasing that piece of property for the purpose of the police, new police station, and the meeting was canceled. And it was, there were two of them. The second one was canceled. My understanding was that the appraisal for the property came in at $150,000. The owners were looking for $375,000, and there was not going to be any further consideration. So, I ask a question now, is why are we looking at bonding $375,000 when we're no longer looking at that piece of property?
So, you are correct in the timing, in that the appraisal that had been requested by the Board of Selectmen did come in at $150,000, and at a Board of Selectmen meeting, the board voted to not pursue, because in a discussion that the town administrator did have with the seller, there was no, there's not going to be any negotiation relative to their set price. So, that was the decision that was made at that point. So, any subsequent deliberation on that was not going to be timely. Subsequent to that, a group of town members, citizens, came forward with petition and had the signed 25, actually, there was more than that in terms of signatures, to ask that it be on for a bond hearing for the town warrant. That came up at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. There was a vote taken by the Board of Selectmen as to whether or not the Board of Selectmen agreed to the recommendation that was made. The vote ended up being two to one. I did not support going forward with it, but it is now on the warrant. So, that's why we're here, and now we're having the bond hearing, as is required by law.
You have a bond hearing before there's even an agreement we're going to purchase the property, or even before it goes before the town meeting?
Kim can clarify the...
Yes, the law requires the selectmen to hold a public hearing on any bond that may be considered at town meeting that's in excess of $100,000. So, this is supposed to be held prior to town meeting, and it's an opportunity for the citizens to understand that there will be bond questions at town meeting, and to ask any questions that they have. But it has to happen before town meeting.
I see. So, that if, if the town meeting rejected the, the going forward with the purchase of the property, what would happen then to the bond?
Well, they would also be voting on the bond.
Pardon me?
They would also be voting on the bond.
Okay, I see. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Jack, it's no different than the first two bonds that were, that Nancy referred to. The process is exactly the same. If either one of them was defeated, then we would not go forward with raising the money for that either. All three of these are exactly the same, except the third one's a petition.
Okay, thank you. Do you want this turned off?
Yes, please. Thanks, Jack. Any other comments relative to this particular bond? Okay, then I will close the public hearing on the three bonds. Okay, I'll open it up to any other public comment? Any old business? Okay, new business. We have been forced to consider an amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement for Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire that Jamie Hess had presented to us. And the suggested motion, Jamie had come and actually did a presentation before the board on this matter, but the suggested motion is to move to approve the amendment of Article, yeah, 16. Section 2 of the Joint Powers Agreement of the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire is unanimously approved by all member representatives of the agency's annual meeting and as outlined in the November 11, 2022 memo. That's okay.
So moved.
Okay, any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, so that passes. We have resignation of Tim Paritas as an alternate on the... What is this group? CPC?
That's the same one, the same group that was noted above.
They have far too many initials. That should not be outlawed. Anyways, "Board of Directors and Considerance Said to Appoint Robin Rainey Lobaz to Replace Tim." I would assume that Rob, Robin is agreeable to this?
I'm assuming so. She's on the Energy Committee, and Jamie has put her name forward.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to accept Tim Paradise's resignation as an alternate, and request to appoint Robin as a replacement.
I'll say.
All those in favor? Aye? Okay. Discuss employee COLA for FY 2024, which we had left up in the air, which is typical. Kim, do you want to just fill us in on the email that you had sent us?
Sure. Generally, the selectmen set the COLA, the annual COLA for employees, sometime before town meeting. The budget includes $200,000, which has been earmarked for that purpose. We were also hoping to use some of the money for any salary adjustments that might be needed as a result of the salary study that we'll be doing this spring. I looked, the Managers Association generally has like a survey of what COLAs are known by the various towns. This year, they're all over the place. There are some towns that are going as low as 3%, and there are some towns that are going in double digits for COLAs. Sunapee hopes to do a 5% COLA. Newbury will do 7% COLA. Those COLAs are awarded earlier than ours, given that they are on the calendar year, so Sunapees will be awarded in January, and Newbury will go in April. The COLA that you're discussing tonight will not be effective until July 1st. I think that, given the high cost of living that we have been now going through for the past couple of years, that the town should go, I would recommend you go at least 5.5%. If you do go 5.5%, the $200,000 will not be enough. You will have to find $7,000 from another area of the budget, which I think is possible. I mean, if we sit down and look at some projects that we could put off, it's a possibility. I understand that COLAs, the last couple of years, they've been higher than they ever have been. But I think that the caliber of staff we have, it's important to make sure that, you know, we recognize those efforts, and key, because again, the cost of living is designed to sort of keep, keep staff sort of at an even, you know, an even level. We do have steps, and the employees are extremely grateful that the selectmen continue to support the step program. The step program for most employees is 2.5% on their anniversary date. So, I know it's a difficult decision, but I think that the staff that we have, it's well worth the investment of funds.
Okay, I'll open it up to discussion. Bill?
So, my bottom line is I'd like to live within the $200,000, which would suggest a COLA of 5.25%. We're dealing with an issue here that has, point in time, people refer to the 8.7% Social Security increase. As of this morning, the U.S. core inflation rate is down to 5.58%. The U.S. total inflation rate is down to 6.41%. I believe that if we were to do 5.25%, which in addition to the 2.5% step increase would give our employees a 7.75% increase, is reasonable and lives within the monies that we've already set aside, plus or minus a few hundred dollars, I believe, depending on who actually gets the money on July, July 1st. I would note that last year, when Social Security was at 5.9%, that the town gave COLA 4.5% in addition to 2.5. So, the employees got 7% last year. Do we talk about moving averages over a period of years, or whatever? I know I'm slicing the baloney pretty thin here, but I'd like to live within the $200,000 money that we approved in the budget, and therefore, I would recommend 5.25%.
Janet?
I think that's a good compromise. I think that's reasonable, and I, I hope that our staff would, would feel the same way. I know it's, it's been difficult with inflation, what it is, paying for utilities and all of those things. But I think that if we can stay within that $200,000, I think that's a good goal.
I know there's several department heads here. Does anyone wish to weigh in? Your thoughts?
I appreciate the efforts of the board and of the town administrator to come to a compromise on behalf of the employees and for the taxpayers, keeping them in mind. It is a very competitive market for police officers these days, and so I wouldn't want the town to get too much, or too far behind the eight ball, so to speak, as, as we go forward, because the, the market is just so competitive for, for us to find quality candidates that are a good fit for our town here. So, I guess I would just offer that, that I appreciate the efforts, and it's important to, to stay within a realm of some, of a wage that people would want to come here to work in, in New London. It's a great place to work, no matter what, but when it comes down to brass tacks, we have to be able to pay a good wage, too.
Understood. Right. Anyone else? Bob?
I'll agree with Emily. I think, I thank you guys, first of all. It is very important, I think, right now, with other towns being short-staffed. I know the governor's trying to adjust the DOT's wages to try to maintain what they have, and hopefully build up their force. So, there's, there's a lot of competition out there at this point. So, I really appreciate anything we can do to maintain what we have.
Well, I would agree. I think that the 5.25 is a good compromise, while still recognizing town employees as we have wanted to do continually. And with the step increases, I think it's a fair and equitable resolve.
I think, just for the record, Nancy, we also ought to note that sometime in the next few months, we're going to do a complete study of wages, comparing New London's wages with other wages and so on, and that may result in additional requirements to...
Increase or balance.
Meet the needs. It's been a difficult time, I think, because with the pandemic, lots of the information that might normally be available hasn't been available. We haven't been able to do that study. But that, I think, is going to be important, and I hope the employees of the town will appreciate the fact that we're doing everything we can to try to keep on top of this.
Right, understood. So, I'll make a motion that we propose the COLA of 5.25% for fiscal year 2024.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Just to note, receipt, we have the fiscal year 2022 town audit. I see we're still using Fledznik and Sanderson, so, there's always discussion every year whether or not we're going to change. But, okay, town administrator report.
Okay. Yesterday, Adam Ricker, Housing Commission Chair, Peter Nichols, Housing Commission Member Amy Kaplan, and I went to our Housing Academy session in Bedford. Some of the topics were responding to opposing views, ways to use housing data and engagement, and key informant interviews. So, it was, it was pretty good, and they gave us a nice lunch. So, it was, it was good. It was very well attended. They were talking about, they were hoping, you know, that when they started this Housing Academy, that they might get a dozen or so people. And I think there were like 50 people in the room, so.
Great. Excellent.
Very good. Yep. Everybody hopefully noticed our new chairs in the lobby. The Dollys and the Casters hopefully will be here in April. We won't keep them out there until April. Hopefully, I can get Public Works to help out after they've finished cleaning up the snowstorm, and we'll get these out and put those in. I was down at the Legislative Office Building on Tuesday, testifying on a bill that was introduced by our representative, Karen Ebel, House Bill 93, that will give the selectmen in their various towns the authority to adopt seasonal speed limits. The state of New Hampshire can have seasonal speed limits on state roads, but currently, selectmen are not able to do the same on town roads. So, we'll see how that goes. We did have two New London residents from Bunker Road also speaking to that issue. So, we'll see how that goes.
And the article did make the front page of the Union Leader.
Unfortunately, they had the wrong title for me. I did not say I was a selectman. I assure you of that. But, yeah, so, right, yeah, so I...
But you are quoted in there, so there's...
Right, but I didn't say it. But I definitely was there, so, that's all I have.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Committee meetings and reports?
Okay. We had a planning board meeting on February 14th. There were a couple of tree cuttings, a lot line adjustment, and a final site plan review for one of the tenants at Mountain View Shopping Center. They wanted to take on more space than they already had. Mountain View Shopping Center is where, and at this particular location, is where Colonial Pharmacy used to be. And that was it.
Okay, Bill?
Okay, well, the Waste Reduction Committee had a vigorous meeting this past week, and the good news is that they've got a very significant program set aside for Earth Day on April 22nd. That's a Saturday. They're going to do, from 9:30 in the morning to noon time, have a number of speakers and demonstrations about composting and so on at the Trace Memorial Library. Should be a very interesting day. I think, Chief Cobb, that they're going to be in touch with you about some traffic issues, because they're planning to do it on the front lawn of the library.
For what is this?
This is Saturday, the 22nd of April.
Oh, for Earth?
For Earth Day. They're going to have some outdoor demonstrations, and they're a little worried about cars along Main Street slowing down to see what's going on and so on.
Yes.
Just to...
I'm sure they'll reach out, yes.
Yeah, so, anyway. And then, on the not-so-pleasant side, we did have a discussion about the issues at the transfer station, about the fact that we're no longer accepting paper for disposal recycling. The selectmen did receive a letter this week about that, and I don't know, Bob, if you want to, just for the record here and the recording, explain why that's happening, so that people will understand. And I think in municipal matters, Kim is going to cover the issue, the next issue, but it's a, an issue that seems to have gotten the attention of a lot of people.
So, just to fill you in, we were using the revolving fund, the recycling, revolving fund, to offset the difference in the cost for recycling paper. The facility in White River Junction shut down to taking our paper. That was rather convenient for us. The trucking fees were cheap. I think the place they were taking it, once they shut down, the NRRA set up a place in Bill Ricker, Mass. Unfortunately, Bill Ricker started out, they were only charging us like $17 a ton to take our paper. But that wasn't the issue that was concerning to me. The, the prices for trucking it ended up getting up towards $695 a trip. So, we got faced with that, and then paper went up to $45 a ton that we're paying to dispose of. So, you see, the dilemma I have is the amount is dwindling rather quickly. It's only a $5 difference to taking it to Berlin. We go that way. Generally, we, it fluctuates. We generate between six and eight ton of newspaper a month. There are other towns that are bailing it. I'd love to say we could do that, but we just don't have the space. That's one of the concerns over there that we've had to face many times. I do know we're not the only town. I've had several towns reach out to New London, saying, "Hey, can we bring our paper to you?" And I say, "Absolutely not." Town of Womit just put an article in the inner town. They're not recycling anything. They're putting everything in the hopper, which I know the town I belong to, Fatras, in Sutton, they take all their plastics, throw it in a dumpster. It, they did the zero sort, and they stuck with this. Unfortunately, the trucking on that, they're being charged, I think, right around $75 a ton to take this. And I know for a fact, they say, they won't tell me where it's going, what's happening with it, but I know for a fact, nobody's going to sort that stuff. It's going in the landfill.
Sure.
Town of Sunapee, they no longer take paper either. They're putting theirs down the hopper as well. So, a lot of towns that are doing that. I suspect that this is going to change. The market changes. The, at this point right now, my plan is actually working a little bit better than I thought. We had a response from the NRRA, because we pulled the plug on it. They're losing revenue as well. I ended up with five emails within that first week. So, my message is out there. They are looking. Hopefully, things will change soon.
Right.
That's the New Hampshire Resource Recovery Association, who we belong to, that actually looks for places to take recyclables, to try to get us the best possible price. Not working so good with paper.
Bob, thank you. I think, you know, we had a good discussion the other day about, about this, and we know that you're doing all, all you can, but it does hit a sort of hotspot with people in town, and we're, we need to begin to educate them as to what we're doing. Just for the current time, does not make sense, unfortunately. On the good side, the composting, as you know, actually decreases what goes into the landfill, and we're working hard on that, and hopefully we'll get... landfill, and we're working hard on that, and hopefully we'll get support at town meeting for increasing that program.
And the plastic program as well. A lot of towns don't do that. I just, while I had them on the phone, I asked them what they were doing with that, and pretty much everybody said nothing. So I think that's a plus for us. I mean, it's not a lot of weight coming out of the trash stream or the landfill, but it's an item that's not getting landfilled, so.
It's interesting how interested people are in this subject, and I'm very happy about that, but unfortunately, the market's not cooperating with this.
Thanks, Bob. Okay. Meeting minutes. We have minutes from February 1st, 6th, and 8th. I propose we take them as a slate, unless you have not had a chance to read any of them.
I move we approve the minutes of February 1st, 6th, and 8th.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Upcoming meetings and special events. The next Board Selectmen meeting will be March 9th. There is a citizens' meeting on Saturday, March 4th, at 7:30 in the morning. We do have town elections that will be here Tuesday, March 14th, so we'll have to do something with the chairs relative to that. And then town meeting is Wednesday, March 15th, at 7 o'clock at the Kier Sarge Learning Campus at Gymnasium. And unless there's any other business... Decide on what?
I was going to put on the next meeting, March 9th. Well, you can do it now, or we will have Michael Todd in on the meeting for the 9th to the town meeting prep.
Okay, so we'll defer the discussion until then. So then, if there's no other business, we have our approval of pay vouchers and permits and so forth. Thank you all for coming.